So, good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting the Worcester City Council held this Tuesday, February 18th. And we're meeting today instead of yesterday due to President's Day. Tonight's meeting is here in City Council chambers and is streamed on YouTube. And as I said previously, we are well after 7:00 PM. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is Monday, March 3rd, 2025. With Adams, Hamilton, please call the roll of City Council members.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey. Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And Mr. Gaffey did inform me that he was not going to be here due to a work conflict. We have a quorum. The agenda will be presumed, will remain as presented. At this time, you'll please stand and join us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion from council to approve the minutes from our last meeting on February 3rd?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Abernathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. To start off with, and I had to edit my notes, I had them done Friday, but over the weekend I had to change them because I want to start off by mentioning and thanking our road crews for the efforts they put in over the weekend. Some snows are worse than others, and that was, Sunday was a real difficult one for them. I think the first email went out about nine o'clock, they started out in the roads, and I think council gets to the same emails that I do. They ran all day until midnight that day, which, under the circumstances, was required. So, Mr. Denning, I appreciate all the effort that went into that. And again, by and large, I, I don't know what council hears from your constituents, but the comments I got from the public were generally all positive on the condition of the roads, on really difficult conditions. Unfortunately, it sounds like they may have to be back at it a few days from now, but we'll worry about that when it gets here. Since we last met, a couple of things. The day after we met, one of the local wheelers contacted us and asked if we could do an informational session about our planning and zoning requirements. And I asked, well, I didn't ask, I said yes, and then I asked Vince if he would do it. And Vince was very accommodating, and Vince, Joel, and I kind of tag teamed that a little bit, although Vince did all the heavy lifting. And we had about 20 people show up for that in chambers, and I think it was well received. You know, and our feeling is, probably yours as well, I hope, is that we need, the better the community understands what, how government operates, the better off we all are. So I think it was helpful from that standpoint. That was the same day as the Lyric Theater grand opening. Some of you I know were at that event. If not, maybe at the ribbon cutting a few days later, that we were able to participate in just before the doors opened to the public. We also had an introductory meeting that week with Phil Schleball. Phil's a new hire at Wayne Economic Development Council and an area guy, seemed to be a good addition to that team. That same day, we attended an open house for the new Y Academy out at Bendon Drive, a nice addition to the community. And one of the big things our employers talk about is need for more childcare. And this is a combination between the Village Network and YMCA, and it's a great partnership that should serve them both well. On the 11th, I was part of a panel put on by WDC that included Mayor Plyman from Oroville, the Wayne County Commissioners, Representative Meredith Craig, Ohio Senator Al Landis, and a representative for Congressman Max Miller's office. I had visions for 2025. It was a nice opportunity for us to get out there and talk a little bit about what we saw happening in the coming year. It was well attended, and I want to thank WDC for putting that together and allowing me to be a part of it. That same day, I did the first of my State of the City presentations, that one to Kiwanis. I've got three more coming up, to Rotary, to Lions Club, and City Council. I would just say that that morning session of WDC was like five minutes, and the Kiwanis presentation was like 30. So I do have a condensed version for you, so when we get to that point, maybe we'll take a vote before the meeting, and tell me if you want the five-minute one or the 30-minute one.
Five.
You already voted.
I already voted.
A few days later, Dee Smith, who's the executive director of Ohio Association of Career and Technical Education, was in town. She's kind of career of all, in charge of all the career tech schools, and we toured the Career Center. And again, Matt Plyman and the three county commissioners were all present. And we've got, you know, our county commissioners, kind of unique possibly, two of them are graduates of the Career Center, and a third one, Dave McMillan, taught in career tech at a different Career Center. So obviously, that's a very important piece of the community, in everybody's eyes, but for them as well. So that was a good opportunity. That same afternoon, I met with Chief Fisher, and Tony Lemon, and Judge Spittler. We had to kind of put our heads together and talk about ways we can maybe improve some efficiencies with the, how we dealt with the court system. And that was kind of a productive conversation, maybe as much as anything, a spitballing session about ways that, ways that the Worcester PD and possibly the courts could work better together to provide better service to the community. So appreciate Chief Fisher and Tony, and Judge Spittler as well, for making their time to have that discussion. That same day, Worcester Growth had their first meeting in several months. Several significant things took place at that. First of all, we discussed support for a potential annexation that could add significant room for housing expansion in future years, so more to see on that as it comes along. We also approved a proposal to sell the last parcel in the industrial park. We're now waiting for a response from a potential buyer. And as part of that, Green Local, or excuse me, the State Board of Education approved about the same time, just coincidentally, the territory transfer of that from Green Local to Worcester City School District. If you recall, that's a, an arrangement that's worked out between the school districts, where Green Local is held harmless, but it does allow Worcester City to collect the additional property taxes off the increased, the improved parcel. So that's a big factor in allowing us to move forward with that expansion. It also opens up another question for us long-term is, in terms of future economic expansion or commercial expansion, that industrial park has been a huge win-win for us in the community, is that, okay, what do we do next? But again, that's a, I guess, a discussion for later day. We also received the potential, excuse me, reviewed the potential cornerstone project with the full Worcester Growth Board. That's, again, a potential project. We talked about that at length with City Council before, so there's nothing new on that front. But that, again, because that was our first Worcester Growth meeting in several months, some of it was new to them, so we went over that. And again, just to reemphasize that, that's a moot point unless the bond issue passes in May. If it doesn't pass, then the schools are going to go stay along with the cornerstone site, and we don't have to be concerned with that. The next day, Joel and I had lunch with Congressman Max Miller and Jeff King, his area rep. Congressman Miller, Congressman Miller, again, repeated his goal to bring back as much of his tax dollars, or our tax dollars, to the local communities. And Joel and I assured him that we were here to help him do just that. And so we discussed not only our current projects that we have on the board now, but also projects in our 10-year capital improvements plan. And then just coincidentally, after lunch, we met with Scott Boyes, the CEO of Worcester Community Hospital, because Scott is now trying to, the hospital is looking very much towards a roundabout, or really an alongabout, oblong about, I gotta say that right, that we have designated, as opposed to the peanut, we're calling it the kidney, at the intersections of Elm, Cleveland Road, and Bell. So again, and what we really talked about is trying to firm up the timing of those projects, both, and the peanut, both in terms of funding, and funding requests, and the construction. So again, that's, that's out there, it's several years down the road, but, and certainly even beyond, further down the road than the peanut would be, but it's, it's on the horizon. That same day, Christina Dantona, the Director of Housing and Homelessness Services at 180, released the results from their point-in-time count. And if you're, I think most of council's familiar with that, but maybe some of the public are not, that's an effort to go out at one time in the county and get a head count of the homeless population. Everybody involved knows it's an under count, but it is kind of a barometer, because you can look from year to year and see how things are trending, or if they are trending. Anyway, this most recent one was countywide numbers of 116 people experiencing homelessness, with 87 of those in some type of shelter and 29 unsheltered. And to look back, just historically, I just pulled out the last two numbers, or she included those in her report, they use twice a year, summer and winter. So the summer number was 112, and the, from a year ago last winter was 110. So really, no change that you can say is measurable, given the margin of error with that. And I think Joel has more history on this than I will, but those numbers have stayed pretty constant for about 10 years, I think. And again, I'm not making a comment whether that's a reasonable number or not a reasonable number. You know, I made this comment, I think when I was talking to somebody yesterday, you know, if you've got five people that are homeless, and it's, it's, if you're one of that five, and, or it's a loved one, or someone you, you know, you care about, you know, five's too many. But I think it does go to show that, I've had people ask me, boys, you know, is homelessness really ramping up in our area, you're seeing a spike in it? And I think the answer is no, we're not. Doesn't mean it's not an issue, doesn't mean that it's not a problem, but we're not seeing any, in the recent years, or recent months, you know, we're not seeing a huge surge in that number. Phil Turski participated in that count, and I want to thank Phil for taking his time to do that, and I think it was informative on his part on that. And then just yesterday, John Finn is back on Panorama with MCTV, and he's looking for interview subjects, and he was scraping the bottom of the barrel, and he asked me, so we did that, and we had some fun doing with that, doing that. And they've expressed an interest in maybe making that a regular event, not necessarily with me, but with different members of the city. And I know, you know, I look over there, and there's, I see three potential programs right sitting across from me, Ashley Hersberger, which only do a good job, and we have plenty of others. So we're going to work on that and, and maybe make that a regular event. Looking ahead, WDC put together a tour of the new Triway facilities for tomorrow at four o'clock for the WDC membership, and they've invited the Main Street and Chamber Boards to go along. That's going to be a nice opportunity, I've said this before, but that Triway facility is both a, certainly a great benefit to the county and to that district, and it's a little bit of a challenge to Worcester City Schools. You know, when you've got somebody next door with that quality of facilities, it should give you pause for thought. On the 20th, we're having our first years, the first quarter meeting with the Commissioners. We've now set up a schedule where we're meeting quarterly with the Wayne County Commissioners. I'm sure the peanut will come up and some of the details of that, now that we're moving a little further along. Friday is the Employee Recognition Event for lunch. I don't know if any council members are planning to be there, but it's always a nice turnout, and I hope you can join us. It's a nice opportunity for us to be able to say thank you to some of the employees that we don't see on a regular basis. Next week, we have the Chamber Dinner. Want to point that out, not just because of the community event, but also want to point out that Tony Lemon is going to be recognized. He's going to receive the Leadership Worcester Distinguished Alumni Award, so congratulations, Tony, for that. Quick review of the agenda, we have eight items on first reading, all but the pre-annexation agreement or budget due. As always, the managers are anxious to get moving on the purchases and contracts, but we would ask the council, consider passing the second item, which is 2025-12, and eighth item, which is 2025-18 tonight, provided there, there are no concerns raised. I, you know, I never want to push council to vote on something before they're ready to do so, but if you read Joel's update last Friday, he pointed out that in 2025, so far, we've awarded five major infrastructure comment, contracts. And because council is authorized though rapidly, which allowed us to get ahead of the game in terms of bidding and scheduling for the contractors, those total bids have come in so far 26% under budget, so it does make a difference. And again, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that. One of the events that I, that I was not able to attend, but Phil did, speaking of Phil, is that they did have a ribbon cutting at Upward Bound, that facility, and Phil did attend, I'm, I'm sorry, Homeward Bound, sorry about that. And thank Phil for covering me on that one. And congratulations to that group for getting that project up and going. Finally, I want to thank John Rice and Joel for their presentation on the peanut roundabout earlier this evening, as well as their efforts over the last few months to communicate not only with the property owners in immediate vicinity, but also with City Council and with the larger community. Those efforts are going to continue as we move forward in this project. I know that there are people in the community with very strong feelings about this project, and that's not uncommon. In recent decades, we've had heated community debates about street widensings, bike paths, sidewalks, water towers, communication towers, and other public facilities such as the safety center. There's been opposition to all the roundabouts we've installed at some point, both the two on Smithfield Western and the two newer ones on Oak Hill. In each case, cost, safety, you name it, have been raised as concerns by the public. And in each case, council has had to evaluate those concerns, and then weigh the good of the greater community versus the good of the individual property owners, which is really part of the job of, of local government. Not to say this has always been the case, but more often than not, City Council has found that the greater good of the community outweighed the concerns of the individuals involved. As a result of that, the community, we all, in the community, we all benefit from those public improvements. And the effective landowners are compensated for whatever property they've been required to give up, and that's something that's required not under, not only under Ohio law, but under the U.S. Constitution. So there's no taking of property without compensation. As, and as I think Joel pointed out tonight, that the actual takings involved here are going to be very minimal. I strongly believe that the peanut is necessary, and that now is the time to do it. We've heard a variety of opinions about the current condition of the intersection. Personally, I feel that those current conditions in and of themselves would warrant the roundabout. But regardless of those current conditions, the amount of increased development in that area that we're going to see in the future years, both residential, institutional, and commercial, is going to demand that we do something there. Otherwise, that intersection is going to be impassable for large stretches of every school day. And the more this traffic that is on those roads, the more disruptive the construction is going to be. And there's no way to sugarcoat that, the construction is going to be disruptive for a number of months, just like it was with the improvements on Oak Hill and Milltown. So in my mind, this isn't a question of whether or not we improve that intersection, but a question of when we act. And make no mistake, if we choose not to pursue this now, the problem is not going to go away. It will simply be a matter of kicking the can down the road. I believe that I was elected to address problems, or better yet, to deal with issues before they come, become problems. And for that reason, the council should decide not to move forward with the peanut this year, when it comes time for a vote. You can be assured that the project will be coming back to you next year, and for every year thereafter, as long as I'm in office. Again, I appreciate the effort and the thought that has gone into that and the discussion so far, and I know it's going to continue. I know the property owners are concerned about the disruption and the potential loss of property, but we feel that the county commissioners have indicated willingness to sacrifice as much county land as we need to make this happen, and that has, as Joel pointed out, that has not always been the case. So if we do this now, we can minimize the loss of property to the neighboring property The cost of this is never going to be less, and the disruption is never going to be less. So with that, I will turn this back over to Mr. President, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next item this evening, we have, we have no communications from the public, we have no petitions, but we do have a liquor control request, which if you'll read that for us, Ms. Hamilton.
We received a liquor control request to transfer a D2, D2X, D3, and D3A licenses from Drink on Market, Inc. to Market Grill, LLC, first and second floor, basement and patio at 234 South Market Street.
And as we've had in the past, they basically are asking us if we wish to have a hearing in our county seat in Columbus, or that we are willing to, that we do not request a hearing. So with those options, is there a motion from council?
Motion to waive hearing.
A motion to waive hearing by Ms. Knappich, second by Mr. Husey. All in favor of the do not request a hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Hamilton will send that back to state liquor control. Ms. Warden, you have a committee report for us.
Sort of. An unofficial committee meeting, public meeting this evening regarding the roundabout, oblong about, peanut, whatever it's called. So we have lots of names, nicknames for it, and Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Rice provided a lot of details, and I think that it gives all of us on council a lot to think about, especially when accompanied with the public feedback that we've probably all been receiving and will continue to receive. We appreciate hearing from everybody. I especially appreciate hearing from the folks who aren't immediate neighbors, because I obviously think we can all sympathize with the folks who live directly there. We know how you feel, we hear you. Hearing from people outside of there is, is very helpful. But without any further detail on that, I think, oh, I'm sorry, just to say, Mr. Montgomery did point out that the meeting would be available on YouTube, and it is being livestreamed, so, or was being livestreamed. So you can follow along for your enjoyment, and we'll have a future meeting that will be notified publicly, so if anybody wants to come and bring their, their thoughts and their opinions, we will gladly entertain those. That's all I have.
With that statement, then, is there a date that you have in mind with that?
Not, not off the top of my head, I mean, really, if we want to talk about it now, I was, I was wanting to confer with the administration to find out what your timeline, I mean, are you thinking May is, or when are you, when are you planning on presenting anything to councils? July?
We've already ripped the Band-Aid off, we might as well just keep.
Well, that's, that's fine, yeah.
Later, probably a little later in the year, if you look at that schedule and the presentation, the next, the next piece that would be for council authorization would likely be for any acquisition, right away acquisition.
Okay.
And we might be able to be sooner than that, if you were looking at November, but it could, it could be sooner than that, depending.
And there are no, no committee meetings or hearings coming up, to your knowledge, and?
There's nothing that I'm aware of at this moment, no.
Okay.
And we won't fall into anything, in theory, well, not in theory, we won't really have anything until the end of the year, again, with finance.
Sure. Well, I suppose if it's top of mind, I mean, we might as well get the ball rolling on this, and we can do the next council meeting. We'll do a 6:00 PM?
Well, before that, though, Mr. Mayor, you've got, you're going to need to do your State of the City address at some point, which at this point, we don't have scheduled yet.
We do. You're checking the date.
And I would, I would say I just haven't told the Mr. President yet, I'm not going to be here for the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am scheduled for the next city council meeting.
All right, okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
We'll postpone it then to the following meeting. I don't have a calendar here in front of me, so.
March 11th, then.
Oh, no, we're not doing that on St. Patrick's Day. We'll put, I'm not coming to this meeting.
So April 7th.
There we go, April 7th, yeah.
The next meeting, okay. All right, so that's fine.
April 7th, 6:00 PM.
I mean, because there's enough people that are here that I'm sure are interested, so I figure we might as well just talk about it now.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Mayor, what's the timeframe for the State of the City? Is that a 6:00 PM start?
He said he could do it in five minutes, so.
I don't know. We might want to get him, we might want to start at 5:30, just to make sure.
No, I mean, I have no problems getting it done in an hour, and that's plenty of time. I would honestly think we'd probably do it at 6:30, and it'd be done by 7:00. But I leave that to council to decide, and I can.
You haven't timed it in front of the mirror yet?
No.
Can you do that and give back to us?
I'd say, I'd say start at 6:00, and if you're done early, then we got a little time.
No, I agree. Just plan on, so this is planned on 6:00. All right. All right, well, some of the miscellaneous work has been done, so we'll, we'll move on. Unfinished business we have done, we'll move right into new business. First item's ordinance 2025-02. As the mayor had stated previously, this is a three-reading item that Mr. Malta and I have already had discussions about, so I think I know where we're going to go. But before that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-02, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with certain property owners for the purpose of facilitating the annexation and extension of utilities services to those properties and allowing for immediate denials.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to leave this on first reading tonight because it, it hit me just today, didn't know I was reading this, and I want to make sure that all public input is received, if there's any. So we will look at this again in two weeks.
How many property owners are we talking about?
One.
This one, that's right there.
Yeah, it's that new house that's on Mechanicsburg that's being built across from the new development?
No.
Yeah.
That's one of those pockets.
Yeah.
One of those islands that are annexed to the city. That was coming up every now and then.
Is there any other comments from the administration?
First, just want to apologize to Mr. Malta, because Vince and I, Vince, Marion, I had asked to do the, the agenda request, and I thought he was calling, calling the sponsor, and I think he thought I was calling the sponsor. Unfortunately, over the weekend, it didn't reach out, so I apologize for that, but this is something, I don't think we had any happen last year, but this is happening periodically when there's these little pockets like Knappich was talking about, that they're ready to connect the water to sewer, the annexation process is going to take longer, you know, than, it'd be too long, they'd like to annex, and so we've done this quite a bit in the past, but we just made a signed agreement saying, you can go ahead and hook to the water sewer, but as soon as you can annex, you know, you will go through that annexation process. It just lets us extend the water sewer zone before the process is complete. And I do know, right now, they have easements getting to the road, and I think they're in the process of actually acquiring, you know, actual right-of-way reserves for utilities, so.
So we're not delaying this project if we wait two weeks?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Matthew Long, attorney for the Shenanigans. Yes, it would be a delay for the project, the contractor's ready to move forward with that. Certainly understand the prerogative of council to leave this on first reading tonight, if that's the decision. And certainly that leave it open for public comment, although I would be surprised in this instance if there would be. So these typically, as I've done several of these, I feel like every time these come up, I end up before this group to do one of these, and these are usually pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any questions while I'm here, too.
Something I'll point out is it is, two sides are, it butts up against, you know, the city, so it just gets rid of a little island. We did reach out to the property owners in front, they're just not interested.
Bill, if those two property owners have anything to say, I need to allow them that opportunity. Again, blindsided me, they blindsided all of us, so I will leave this on first reading.
Okay, thank you. That will move on to the next item, Resolution 2025-12. Ms. Hamilton, please read it. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-12. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Axon for the purchase of the TASER 10 platform and Axon's virtual reality trading platform and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Gaffey's out this evening, so Mr. Abernathy, or Mr. Gaffey's out. Mr. Abernathy has been willing to introduce this, so the floor is yours, sir.
All right, well, the old tasers are outdated, and got to get some new ones. I joke, but realistically, these are going to be much better for our police officers, because they're a heck of a lot safer, and they're a better deterrent. I had a chance to talk with Assistant Chief Rotolo, and the fact is, the new technology is just far superior in these. It gives them a lot more distance to work with when, if they had to deploy. And the good news is, last year, they only had to deploy three or four times, which is fantastic in a full year. But instead of having to be, you know, 10 to 12 feet, you know, they're good up to like 45 feet. So it's, it's making sure that everybody's safe, and you don't have to be right up on them. They have more than just one shot in them, so if you miss, it's, the next op, in the old one, you have one shot. And if you miss, then we know where the next one is. This has 10 shots in it, which means you have multiple opportunities before you have to move to lethal force. This is a superior upgrade, and it makes sure that our police department is not having to resort to anything that goes beyond, you know, using a TASER. So fortunately, it's very unlikely that they have to use these. The history shows it, but it just protects them, and it protects our public, that we don't have to go down lethal force. So this is a budgeted item. We don't need three readings. So I open it up for questions. Assistant Chief Rotolo's here. Chief Fisher's here for any questions on this.
Assistant Chief Rotolo, I also had the pleasure of speaking with about this week. And you mentioned the, for lack of a better term, kind of the safeguard that's on there for, for, basically to track the number of times that it's deployed. It just provides an extra layer of transparency. Can you go into a little bit of detail about that for the public, just so that they're aware of? This is something that was surprising to me that these devices are offered.
Glad to, Councilwoman, President Sanders, under the council, thank you for giving me a second here to talk about this. That was, that's actually one of the things that's on their website. If you go to TASER.com, it actually gives a really deep explanation as to what this does. But that's exactly what it's for, is for added level of transparency. Each trigger pole actually is uploaded to the cloud, to evidence.com, which is where we store all of our body cam and car cam video. It just provides you that level of data to show how many trigger poles, how long. It really is a transparency and accountability feature, so does that answer your question? I thought it was a really kind of a neat thing as well.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And will this increase the necessary capacity of storage? That, you know, is it a significant increase that, I can't imagine, especially if we're only deploying these a couple of times a year?
Yeah, as far as the actual, we're talking about the data storage.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, it's not a giant increase. But TASER isn't a billion-dollar company for nothing, so they've decided that, again, that's always been a big part of the contract, just a little bit of data storage. But we already have unlimited data that's incorporated with our body and car cameras, so this is just a small.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions or comments?
Assistant Chief, when can the department expect delivery and deployment on the road, if we approve tonight?
My goal would be to, as long as you guys approve the us entering into the contract, to actually send that information off to our TASER representative tomorrow. And to get this ball rolling, I would like to get them to avoid it, and at least get, start people to start getting trained in April. So that would be, that would be my, my goal. Really, the biggest next step is just going to be, we need a couple of more instructors, so putting and posting out to get a couple of people to add to our instructor crew, and then getting them here. That would be the biggest potential holdup, would be scheduling them to bring their master instructors to do ours. Typically, like I said, when you and I talk, they're really good about it. And I will tell you one thing, Axon is one of the best companies I've ever worked with as far as getting us their stuff. They're very reliable as far as getting to it, and of course, now that I say that, they'll be back on their way. So, yeah, so I would imagine for the next couple of months.
Perfect.
All right, anything additional? All right, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. Next item, resolution 2025-13. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-13. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder on construction of curb ramps and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, this is a budgeted item, and Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is an ADA requirement that would allow us to accept and use ODOT funds toward our planned 2026 resurfacing project that includes portions of Burbank Road, West Liberty Street, and East Wayne Avenue. The project is estimated to cost the city roughly $600,000. And basically, I mean, if you're unfamiliar with what curb ramps are, these basically are the ramps that go up to the curb, the intersections. So it's much easier for, you know, any type of mobility devices that you might be using. So this is budgeted. I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Huzai. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, resolution 2025-14. It will also be a budgeted item introduced by Ms. Warden. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
I was told I was too quiet. Resolution number 2025-14. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the resurfacing of various roads within the city of Worcester and providing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And this is a request to receive bids for the 2025 Worcester Street resurfacing project. This includes portions of Beechwood Avenue, West Ridge Drive, and Melrose Drive. There might be other streets in the project as the budget allows. The estimated cost is $255,000. And I think anyone that drives around town knows they will benefit from a facelift, especially after the plow trucks have been over them a time or two this winter. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, resolution 2025-15. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-15. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a bike path and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Hamilton, the floor is, or Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this request will authorize the city to accept bids for Phase 3 of Worcester's Bike Loop project. And it's the final step toward constructing the shared-use path, which will, which will be along East Milltown Road and Melrose Drive. The estimated cost is $1,875,000, and it is a budgeted item. I did have a brief conversation with a member of the public this evening. I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't get your name, but you brought up a good, a good question. And I'm curious if Mr. Rice can fill us in on this, that there were 17 trees removed in the preparation for this project along this path. And we're wondering, are there plans to replace, replant any of the trees where, where there's soil available?
No current plans to replace those trees, because by the time we get that 10-foot-wide shared-use path in there, there's just not a lot of room. And for the future, even if, we could plant trees there, yes, there would be room, but in the future, the roots would likely heave the path, and then it would become making issues. So I don't believe on any of our other paths. We have trees in the tree longer. We'll treat this like we do the other ones.
I know there's the one path on Portage Avenue, right, that went around a tree, an old growth tree, that, I mean, for our area. Yeah, I mean, I think that trees are a very valuable resource to our community. It's something that I think, you know, we're known for, or we have been in the past. So just as note, maybe in the future, try to, I'm sure we do, try to, you know, avoid ripping these out whenever possible. But I'd much rather see trees in the front yard than a bike path, personally. That being said, I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy?
Mr. Huzai.
Mr. Huzai, sorry about that. You guys are starting to sound alike.
Oh, no, not from here.
I got to look and make sure the lips are moving. Yes, sir.
I do have one update on this. We talked about this before, but the city did end up filing two adverse possession, excuse me, eminent domain actions against landlords. I think council was aware of that. Happy to report that both of those have been resolved and settled, and we are clear sailing out to the National Park Department.
Okay, thank you. All right. Please call the role on the adoption.
Here we go again. Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Two meetings in a row.
I mean, yeah, I always made it.
Okay, next item, resolution 2025-16. This will be introduced by Mr. Huzai. It is budgeted. If you're able, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-16. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for furnishing bituminous material and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huzai, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a resolution allowing the city to advertise for bids to purchase bituminous asphalt products. And this just allows us to repave our city roads and help Mr. Denning's crew. Mr. Denning's here, if there's any questions. And this is budgeted.
Doesn't appear to be any questions, so motion to adopt by Mr. Huzai. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Knappich?
Sure.
Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Next item, resolution 2025-17. Will also be by Mr. Huzai. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-17. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a tree chipper truck from ArborTech and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huzai, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, Mrs. Warden, but we need to buy a tree chipper truck to take care of trees around the city and maintain, you know, carry out our urban forestry maintenance program. Mr. Denning's here to answer questions, but we are in need of a new truck and a chipper box. And if there's no questions, I would make a motion to adopt, Mr. President.
I have a quick question, just for, just for, I'm not going to use the term I was going to say. But anyways, what do we do with the chip, I mean, is this used in mulch, like in landscaping around the city?
We do. We actually put them back in our parks.
Okay.
And usually, you'll see it in the, in less groomed areas, I would say, but you'll see them in our park beds most often.
Great, thank you.
And to answer your question, we have 150 trees slated to be planted this year. So in the 10 years I've been here, it'll be 1,500 trees we've planted in the city, so.
That's impressive. Thank you.
That's huge.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt by Mr. Huzai, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. With that, Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Motion is approved. With that, our last item this evening, resolution 2025-18. Will also be by Mr. Huzai. With that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-18. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for mowing services for city-owned property and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huzai, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a resolution authorize advertising for bid to mow the city properties. Parks, water basins, highway right-of-ways, all the stuff that our city crews don't really have the time to do. You can see here in our packet, Mr. Denning's estimating it'd take about six people to perform this work. And we just would rather farm this out and go to bid and see what we could do. This is an annual bid that we go out for. Mr. Denning's here, if there's any questions. And if not, I would make a motion to adopt, Mr. President.
I just have one real quick question. How many years have we been contracting this service out?
Probably since 2010 or 2008, about the rate sizing era.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been, we've been doing it since I've been, I've been here since 2012, and I know we've been doing it since.
Yeah. I just was curious.
Yeah.
I knew that we'd always used outside services. Makes more sense.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Huzai, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the adoption.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to miscellaneous. We have two people that have signed up. Our first one, Mr. Barnett.
Good evening, everybody. Had a rough weekend, didn't we, weather-wise? Had an accident in Burbank in Iowa, a friend building 83, but we didn't have one in Wakeford, Burbank, for old man. Don't use that excuse to build a roundabout for safety, reason for accidents, because I've lived there four years now, and you're telling a lie. There hasn't been that many accidents there.
Data I got wasn't there much by our safety.
Anyhow, has there ever been a car towed? Has there ever been a person transported to the hospital? No.
There, there haven't been cars towed. Most of the accidents were non-injury.
Not in the last four years, there hasn't. I have to disagree with you.
There was one that actually, there was an accident, and it had no brakes, so I'm sure it had towed.
Yeah, they were in my driveway. Yeah, he lost his brakes. Most accidents are happened because people are on the fumes. I've witnessed them. I've seen them. Number two, trying to get a real estate person to stand under a sign, this town's impossible, because they don't want to be under the plague. So I went out of town. Lady has 45 years' experience in real estate. I showed her the diagram. Absolutely, that will depreciate my property and other three properties. I'm telling, I'm not going away, folks. You want to listen to me every meeting. I'm not going away. Bob, I'm not going away. I'll tell you what I'm going to do. If this roundabout gets built, as all of you be a witness, I'm mounting a camera on my garage, face in Burbank. If there's one time I can't get on my driveway for any reason, I will sue the city. And I will have your name on it, too, Joe Montgomery, as you all I witness. And it isn't going to be trump change. It's gonna be the property value with Wayne County, Wayne County Albert and Lawrenceville. Am I done?
That's something we have to plug in there, your, uh, two minutes is.
Oh, we have two minutes? No, I was expecting like the gong bell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not stopping you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
He's already expressed my concerns, I don't feel the need to repeat it.
Fair enough. All right, we appreciate that, appreciate you guys coming. With that, I guess we have to hear from council, so, Ms. Warden, you'll start us off this evening.
We have to. We know we have to.
Thank you for that invitation.
As opposed to want to.
Yeah, um, yeah, I don't really have a whole lot to add. I'd like to just kinda thank, you know, the city again for putting together the information this evening, for our discussion about the peanut, and, um, just once again, encourage everybody that has an opinion to share it with your council member or the administration, because, um, you know, that's our job, is to make decisions that, um, reflect the city, the citizens', um, needs, desires, opinions, things like that. So, we look forward to hearing from you. I have nothing else, thank you.
Mr. Malta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I love seeing big crowds, it's very impressive to me, as a council member, that the community's involved. I am here to serve the public and the public's will. And, uh, with that, I will close tonight. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Mr. Myers?
I, I would like to thank Assistant Chief Rotolo and Chief Fisher for the detailed explanation of the new tasers and the training that's gonna be coming along with that, uh, the virtual use-of-force training. When I was, went through the police academy last year, I, like most people, got shot in the first scenario. And, uh, so, uh, I think the new, the new training will be very beneficial for, for you guys, and look, look forward to having you get the new stuff, so. That's all.
Mr. Husey?
Uh, yes, thank you to everybody who showed up for the, uh, roundabout meeting today. Uh, a lot to think about, and, um, we have a lot of work ahead of us to do. And then, uh, lastly, just thanks and a little plug to Luke Martin. He invited me onto his local podcast to talk about city business, and I hope I served you guys well. Check it out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good, thank you. Mr. Abernathy?
Okay, yeah, um, great, great discussion tonight. Uh, as I shared, I will be out, uh, for the next meeting, because I will actually be in Washington, DC. Um, I, too, recently met with Congressman Miller, and I'll be, uh, meeting with him again on the March 5th, and I will have the opportunity to also meet with both of our new senators. So, hopefully, it, it will be in a different capacity, but, um, I always disclose that I am a, uh, city councilman for the city of Worcester when I do meet with these folks, so hopefully, I'll be representing the city well and, uh, continue to, uh, put Worcester on the map and let them know who we are. So, uh, looking forward to have that opportunity, so I will, uh, still hopefully, even though I won't be here, I'll be here in spirit and representing us down in Washington, DC. That's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Kenappick?
I'm gonna make this short and sweet, not repeat too many things. Thank you for everyone who came to the meeting, it's very important that you come and you voice your opinions, and we hear your opinions. I agree with Ms. Warden, we need more people to give their input. It's important for us not to vote on a vocal minority or a quiet majority. We wanna hear what people think. And as Ms. Warden said, not just the local people, but people who drive, the, the people who are current property owners right there, but people who drive that property all the time. And being a lawyer, I tend to ask Joel for a lot of statistics and facts, and, um, he's been very good about getting me everything I have asked for. And, um, I just wanna thank the city crews who are out there diligently over the past two days. Uh, it was, they did an amazing job. It's not easy, and people aren't always looking for you, and it's long hours,